Ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the motion, Mayor, councillor, all of us.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please be seated. I am required to inform you that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services who will be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. Can I take this opportunity to thank councillors Wood and Hughes for their contribution to the work of the council during their time as council members and to wish them the very best for the future.
Aye, aye.
Madam Mayor.
May I be allowed to say two words please? I would like to thank my colleague John Wood for being something like 20 years I've been supporting in this council. I would like to thank him for his endeavours, for his way of working in this community, for his particularly way of working with the 3A community which has helped us develop a way of working relationship with them. To John personally, I say thank you. It's been interesting to talk. To mention character as most people don't know, you have differences in John all the years, but we usually go to a consensus. And I thank the wife also for her kindness and discipline to me all the years. I'm truly sorry, John Wood, but it will not be the end of friendship and skin again. Thank you so much for trying to get this conversation through.
Thank you Madam Mayor for allowing us to speak just for a few moments. I would like to say some thank yous. I think God just shot me down right there. I would like to say that to be known to represent the South Tyneside for this chamber for many, many years. I would like to thank councillor Owen, our lovely, the thanks to him which he was supporting me throughout that term that we've been together. We became a formidable team, especially now the town council and the City Front have done an awful lot to work. I would like to say to the leader of the council for the way that he's led this chamber through the many years, just austerity, that's really crippled, really crippled this part with the financial situation. But to his leadership and this people in this room, I frankly adore for the way that you have diligently put the work to help the people of South Tyneside and to maintain the standards that we value at the base. I would also like to say to Martin, could he please from very much sincere thanks to all the senior management and all the staff, all the help that they have given me all the time that I've been here. I only have one other thing to say, and that's to a very good friend of mine who's been there for day one with me, and that's councillor Faircunning of. She's been an absolute star in my life and I would sadly, sadly miss her and God if it's true.
Councillor Anglin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry Madam Mayor. We started before he got up, before I had chats to say. Listen, just very quickly, John introduced me to the chamber, he introduced me to here in the south Tyneside, to the council. He introduced me through the first few years, actually through the rest of the time. I just want to say on a personal basis and on a professional basis that he is a person's person and he's the one who knows the war, he knows the people in the war and by heavens, he did an awful amount of work for them. So what he's done for the war, for South Tyneside, South Tyneside and for myself. Thank you.
Right. The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to verbally make any declarations? Will we formally move on to the next business? No one. The next item of business is the minutes of the meetings of the council on the 22nd of February and the 26th of March 2018. Are they accepted as a true record?
Agreed.
The next business is mayor's communications. There are no mayor's communications to report on this occasion. The next business is to consider a report of the chief executive on the Members' allowances scheme 2018 to 2019. A copy of the report was sent out under separate cover. I will ask councillor Ed Malcolm to formally move the report. Councillor Malcolm.
Thank you Madam Mayor. This report proposes a scheme of allowances for members for the 2018-19 financial year. The law requires the council to set members' allowances each financial year. When setting allowances, the council must have regard to recommendations of an independent members' allowance panel. The council cannot change the allowances scheme without first consulting the panel. Details of the members of the panel are set out in the report. Following a freeze between 2009 and 2016, members' allowances have been revised over the last two years in line with the South Tyneside Award. The negotiations for the 2018 pay awards unfortunately only concluded yesterday, leaving no time for this report to take into account in particular reports. This report therefore proposes that the 2017-18 allowance scheme be continuously changed for 2018-19, but subject to review later in the year as recommended by the interplanetary panel in the light of the final result of the employee pay award negotiations. Members are recommended to consider the proposed 2018-19 scheme of members' allowances, which is appended to the report and to agree its adoption and to agree a review later in 2018. I move the report, Madam Mayor.
Is that seconded? Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the corporate director, children, adults and health on South Tyneside Better Health at Work Award 2017. I will ask councillor Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon.
Thank you Madam Mayor. For the commission, the Northern T E deal on the further law of money to the better health of the world, which in every case would really help people to work. The award was established by the National Health Department in 2009 with the aim of encouraging and celebrating the health of local employees and addressing health issues in the workplace. The promotion of health and wellbeing workers by the National Health and Wellness Strategy and the global job strategic needs asset settlement. The award seems free and available to all employees in the North East of the area irrespective of size or industry type. There are four levels that accept criteria which include next. And these are one, still left, four, and one day more next. Each company usually has to be established within five months qualified. In 2017, four new organisations in South Tyneside were successful in achieving different levels of the Better Health at Work Award. These companies include the Royal Health Company, Sport and Time, the Divided Agency, and the College, the Institute of South Tyneside, the Social Security, four levels based in South Tyneside County. The third is all organisation evaluation process and moving assessment given this year. And these companies include Time, the Royal Pressure, AC Air Racing, Jarro School, St Wilson's Hall City, South Tyneside Homes and TSJ Police. This gives total reach for 11,000 employees across the world who are to be called to South Tyneside to improve health and wellbeing. A healthy assessment is carried out by a company and a third is assessed to ensure it is required to make a viable settlement. South Tyneside achieving average is 77%, which can outstandingly touch. The top three health campaigns that our 11,000 South Tyneside employees wanted to see information on were healthy eating, physical activity, stress management. The award has a number of benefits to it and one of the most appealing to employees is reduction in sickness assets, which saves costs to companies. On average, the reported cost of average per employee was £595,000 in 2018. Last year, our companies had a reduction in one of the £55,000 per employee. Again, that's fantastic achievement for companies like South Tyneside. Alongside the award, the old government of Jarro School is coming in the award when we are on the first overall priority of the North East to achieve such active level of engagement. A health school to call upon the council in aid. Our third achievement will be hosting the annual local health celebration award every year. This event helps celebrate hard work and the success of normal operations in schools and classrooms. The council is fully working towards achieving a silver award in 2018 and work will continue to progress across the whole council. Madam Mayor, members asked to the board to vote and our members to actively promote and advocate our companies for the award and sign a post then to our political team for the award as a jury.
Thank you councillor. Is that seconded? Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the operations director on leisure services, 1 million customers. I will ask councillor Kerr to formally move the report. Councillor Kerr.
Thank you Madam Mayor. This report celebrates the performance of the council's leisure facilities with memberships incentive users reaching unprecedented levels during 2017-18. In recent years, the council has invested heavily in its leisure stock, providing accessible and affordable modern state of the art facilities, creating an environment which encourages mass participation. Based on addition for the last 12 months, the offer has exceeded all expectations. Over 1 million customers haven't used the full range of facilities on offer. The newly developed Haven Point in Heaven Central have proven to be the most popular with over 700,000 admissions. Prior to opening Haven Point in October 2013, the council had 414 leisure clubs members paying by the way of direct debit. Since that time, the membership has continued to grow in line with facility investment. The response to the investment along with changes to working practices and more programme has been immense, with leisure membership now at all time high with 6,222 members generating 1.4 million per annum. Whereas footfall in membership is important, the true trust of a successful community leisure offer is the way to the user it attracts and the evidence strongly suggests that the council we are providing a balanced, inclusive offer with services appealing to all aspects of the community. For those issues who do not wish to commit to an ongoing direct debit payment, there is an option of a discount card scheme paying a small annual fee of £6.25 for residents. Car holders receive reduced entry rates every time they use the facility. Currently, over a third of the users benefit from concessioning membership average. The level of discount received depends on an individual's circumstances, but essentially they are reduced rates for the elderly, unemployed and disabled. As an incentive to attract young people into our facilities, the cards are available free of charge to those under 18. At present, there are 18,927 cards being actively used with 6,170 registered to adults and 12,757 assigned to juniors. In addition to the above discounts, we have introduced a new concession as part of the council's commitment to provide young people with the best start in life. This initiative, which is called the MODG offer, gives looked after children aged 14 to 17 and care leavers up to the age of 25 free access to leisure services. The offer also extends to an accompanying family member, caregiver or friend. There are 50 young people currently registered on the scheme and collectively they have benefited from 873 fee additions across all sites. Whilst we are seeing record numbers of admission and membership, we are committed to achieving continuous improvement. We currently deliver 140 fitness classes per week to 3,000 customers. In the coming months, we'll expand this programme, further invest in technological equipment that will allow us to deliver virtual exercise classes at any time, day or night. There are no financial implications arising from this report, but members may wish to note that the gross income generated during the last 12 months equals to 3.4 million pounds. It's my duty to move to this report being noted.
Right. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report?
Just quickly, come in.
Right, okay.
Thanks Madam Mayor. Good evening colleagues and members of the public. I don't think it'd been, I think we'd be remiss of somebody in the council not to stand up and say what I want to say now about these leisure facilities. Children going to school now at Borough aged four to five, the obesity levels are about 11%. Obesity levels at the age of 11 are about 23%. So it's a duty for us to provide good leisure facilities and that's what we've done. Echoing John Wood's earlier words about austerity, despite austerity, because we've had good leadership, because we've had a good input, we have built these facilities and hopefully, as the ancient Greeks and the Romans used to say, a healthy mind and a healthy body. And that's what we're trying to do with these leisure facilities. The absolute first class facilities are complemented by the staff who deserve a thank you as well. Because without the good staff, you wouldn't keep attracting the customers. So long may it continue. But I think that is another example, and I'm not going to bore everybody here, with some of the achievements that this council has achieved in the last number of years, despite austerity John, you know, the decent home standard, you know, I'd be here all night with a great big tale. But leisure facilities are so, so important in today's society and they're not to be forgotten and we have not forgotten about them. Thank you.
Thanks councillor McChampe. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. The next business is to consider a report of the operations director, Hello Tomorrow, Change is Happening Annual Report 2017 to 18. I will ask councillor Kerr to formally move the report. Councillor Kerr.
It's Hello Tomorrow, Change is Happening Annual Report 2017 to 18. 2018 marks an eighth year milestone in delivering our ambitious futures programme, Help Tomorrow, Change is Happening. It is clear that we have made remarkable progress towards our vision to make South Tyneside an outstanding place in which to live, invest and bring up families. Across the whole of South Tyneside, we have invested in award winning cultural facilities, beaches and parks, to highly rate schools and services and growing business base. We have a great deal to be proud of in South Tyneside. Since the 2010 general election, local government has been asked to make significant savings year on year with South Tyneside experienced amongst the greatest funding reductions of all local authorities in the UK. However, despite unprecedented cuts in funding, we have not changed our vision. We have accelerated it. We have pushed ahead with the generation of our town centres with public realm improvements, asset rationalisation and investment in community facilities across South Tyneside. We have delivered more and better housing, including homes adapted to the specific needs of residents. We have made progress towards developing industrial facilities like the International Advanced Manufacturing Park and Hobart Development, which will help secure more and better jobs in years to come. Just some of the highlights in this annual report include prayers from the Local Government Association for the council's approach to regeneration, describing South Tyneside as a high performance and ambitious council that is leading the way in transforming services and incomes to regeneration. New iconic cultural attraction, the Word. The National Centre for the Written Word has drawn 400,000 visitors in its first year of operation and secured 18 regional and national awards. 111,000 visitors attended the 2017 South Tyneside Summer Festival, spending an estimated 2.5 million with local businesses. 94% of primary schools and 77 of secondary school pupils now learning in good or outstanding Ofsted rated schools. And Ofsted inspectors rated children's services as good, with adoption services rated at outstanding. Results which took place, the council, in which the place the council into the top 25% of authorities nationwide which have taken part in the current inspection framework work. Viewed in isolation, each of these achievements is noteworthy, but taken as a whole, the picture is nothing short of extraordinary. I invite elected members to approve this annual report and reflect on the achievements of the last year and indeed over the whole futures programme which we developed together eight years ago. I ask you to join me in commending the very positive work of this council and our partners to improve services and outcomes for our residents, which will continue to make South Tyneside an outstanding place to live, invest and bring up families. I wish to move that the Hello Tomorrow, Change is Happening Annual Report 2017-18 be approved and that the council partners and partners be recommended for the whole of our work we are doing to improve services and outcomes for residents. Right you go.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to consider a report of the acting corporate director, Economic Regeneration, on the environmental and sustainability plan. I will ask councillor Moira Smith to formally move the report. Councillor Smith.
Thank you Madam Mayor. This report provides no review of council initiatives to improve the environment, which includes increasing our uses of sustainable energy and reducing our carbon footprint. In 2009, the council became a subsidiary to the European Council of Mayor which permitted the council to develop an action plan to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by least 20% by 2020. The report outlines some of the energy and environmental initiatives that the council has undertaken in following areas. Buildings, waste and recycling, trees and green space, street lighting, meat and dairy emissions. In relation to these five areas, I would like to highlight a number of key actions. Buildings, we have reduced our energy consumption overall by 21% in the last four years. Installed solar panels to 20 buildings and 1,020 council homes. Our newest flagship building at 150 Green and the Word are nationally recognised as being outstanding and excellent in their design, which has maximised their sustainability and reduced their lifecycle costs. Or waste and recycling, 9% of our waste is now landfillled. Our waste and carbon recycled is transferred to an energy for waste farms which provides energy to 30,000 homes. Trees and green space, we have 1.2 million trees in the borough and fell 500 trees per year that are dead or diseased. We replace these trees with two or more new trees. In areas growth fully, such as Ocean Road and Mudtown, we have successfully worked with our partners to improve flood alleviation and provide sustainable urban drainage. These are vehicle emissions. The Energy Saving Trust is assessing our future vehicle requirements to maximise vehicle utilisation and reduce our emissions. Our new vehicles will beat the highest standards for emissions and we are progressing with secure and additional 30 electric charging points. Overall, these options have helped us to meet and exceed our 2020 target of a 20% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions with our current levels now 31% less than those in 2009. At a national level, the government has recently produced a 25 year plan of greener future. Details of how to support and reach the goals are set out in the plan have not been, have not yet been identified. At a more regional level, the North East Local Enterprise Partnership is to commission a plan to consider an 80% reduction in our carbon usage by 2050. Moving back to South Tyneside, we have a number of new proposals which are being developed. These include an energy centre in Jarro using the latest sustainable energy technology to supply a number of buildings in the area. A battery storage scheme that we are pleased to use the renewable energy to either utilise internally or sell back to the energy market. All of these innovative actions have not been at the expense of our green and open spaces and we will continue to champion. and we will continue to champion improvements to our natural assets and local environment without any progress. In summary, the council will continue to champion environmental innovation and lead the way with new sustainable energy schemes. This level of ambition will ultimately drive us towards our energy goal of being cost-neutral by 2030. The council has to know the content of this report.
Right, thank you, councillor. Is that seconded? Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Anglin.
I may speak to the report. It's often the case that when massive developments occurs, as those happening in South Tyneside in general, South Shields, Darren and Heather in particular, the social green issues get sidetracked or even forgotten. May I congratulate the extensive work that's been done, that is being and will be carried out to ensure that our lovely green borough stays just that, lovely and green. For this reason, I'm particularly pleased to see how difficult challenges we set ourselves are not only being this being carried out, but they're being surpassed, as we heard. A target of 20% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2020 has already been superseded with a reduction of 31% since 2009. Energy consumption, as we've heard, is down by 21% in four years, just giving a savings of £350,000 a annum. Our waste is no longer being sent to landfills, instead its disposal is providing energy for 30,000 homes. Other great news for our green policy is that our vehicles are now cleaner, greener and fitted with the latest edition technology. Electricity is green, is clean, and that is why we can see more electric vehicles in our fleet, including commercial vehicles and electric wind lifts in the refuges. And it's good to see how our environmental credentials in our parks, forest and green spaces are not being neglected as we move forward. Our tree stock, as we heard, is enormously important in capturing greenhouse gas emissions. And it's for that reason that whilst diseased or decayed trees are removed, we continue to replace an additional tree to increase our overall stock as we move forward. Nationally too, we move forward, looking to see how the public can refill their water bottles rather than by single-use plastic ones, perhaps even through water tanks, who knows? But the council has proven that its green policy is wider than this. In our local natural environment, our local streets and parks, our local green areas, litter and upkeep is aided by the collaborative work carried out by national partner agencies like National Trust, the R S P B and English Nature, as well as ever-increasing ban of volunteer groups and local partners together work with the council. Add to this, there is a variety, as we heard, of innovative work being carried out, such as the district heating scheme, the aim of which is to produce energy from sustainable sources, including the river tides itself. Likewise, perhaps having an energy store, as we heard at Middlefield Step Up, where solar and wind power could produce clean energy for our own consumption. These are the new ideas explaining why I truly feel that the council is to be congratulating on its application to and success in, not only our old services and the old way of doing things, but the new effective methods being undertaken to make our boroughs one of the cleanest in Britain.
Yeah, yeah, John.
Thanks, how was that, Angela? Thank you. Councillor Macister.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The thing I would like to highlight in this is not only do we look at the issues, but when we have to do something about those issues, then there's great innovation takes place. We don't just do it for the sake of doing, we look at how to improve what has been and what to take. And I'll take people back to Ocean Road, we talked about flood alleviation. And we look at the transformation of Ocean Road since the flood alleviation went in. The difference in Ocean Road is phenomenal and there are always being complimented, visitors in town always saying how wonderful it is. And I take us back to the new commonwealth when the city fence wall was crumbling. We could have just done a basic scheme there to help the environment, to do what was right, but an opportunity was taken again to think forward and develop something sustainable but attractive, and my visit attractive. Again, the whole of the forest was really innovation when we had to do something about to miss it. And I would like to compliment everyone who was involved in those schemes and our current schemes of the Jarro and Heaven, having just been done, basically there's been whole improvement to the whole of the environment. And there are factors, and I think it's a credit to everyone that that is what happens.
I'm just concerned, I feel. Right, is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive questions under procedure rule eight. No questions have been received under this rule. The next business is to deal with petition received. I will explain the procedure to follow for the petition. The appropriate member will present the petition stating the subject of the petition and the number of signatories. We will not debate the petition today. After the petition has been presented in accordance with the constitution, I will move that it be referred to the appropriate body. I will now ask councillor Sewell to present the petition.
Well, Madam Mayor, please accept the petition, the question that South Tyneside Council elected members lobby go north east buses to re-establish the bus link between Duke and Estate, Camber Park Road and beyond. This petition has 454 signatures. Agreed.
Thank you, councillor Sewell. Thank you, councillor Sewell. In accordance with the standing orders, I propose that the petition stand referred to the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive motions under procedure rule 10. No motions have been received under this rule. That concludes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance.